Thank you all for being here. This is Polton County Government Government's Work Session for October the 8th, 2019 to order, and Brian will bring the list forward. Appreciate that. We'll see the elected officials unless we're hiding somewhere. We're very pleased and always honored to have any of our pastors, but this morning Pastor Gaddis, Todd Gaddis from First Baptist Church is going to bring his certification. He'll leave us in our place. Stand and pray before him.
So good to be here. Thank you. It's always an honor. I know I drove over, parked my car, walked in the building, went through the metal detector, and realized I'd gone in the wrong building. So I bet I'm not the only one who's ever done that. But anyway, I think I finally got it together. Thank you. I don't want to wear out my welcome, but I get emails saying who wants to do this, and I'm always eager to do it because I love you guys. And I tell you, it's like it's church in here. And I asked somebody, "Is it always this jovial?" And they said, "Well, not always, but I know you've got challenges." And there's a verse that says in Psalm, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen for his own inheritance." And so I know there's challenges. The county's growing. There's a lot of responsibility, but I pray for you, guys and gals and all the folks. So let's do that. Now, Father, we thank you for the day. You're a mighty and awesome God. This is the day you have made. We will rejoice and be glad. And, Father, thank you for the privilege of praying, and, Lord, we sense your presence here, and I do believe that this is a county that leans upon you and is open to your guidance. And, Lord, we need it. We sure do, because there's so many challenges that growth brings, and decisions are being made. I pray that you would give these leaders wisdom and every, all of our employees, and just, or if you take this time to pray for a shield on our schools, or we, and our first responders, law enforcement, just want to just put a shield over this county. It would be a real light on the hill here in the Spectrum area because we are just seeking your guidance. And I pray for our state, a great state. We want it to stay that way. Or I pray for our nation, a lot going on. I pray for our leaders. And just, most all, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and the privilege of knowing him as Savior in thy name. Amen.
Attention, salute, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks so much, Pastor Gaddis. Honored to be here. Under minutes, September 19th, 2019, work session minutes and September 19th, board meeting minutes are available for review. Our Positively Pauling segment this morning, my favorite, is about the Ride for Wishes that we recently held, right up here in our front yard.
Welcome to the Second Annual Pauling Ride for Wishes. The last event that directly benefits make a wish for you. We had seven wishes for Polton County Kids that we granted last year, and we have 23 that are on the way to us right now.
We first run the proof of charity, so this event fell right in with that.
One thing I've ever known an event with you that had six wish families. Amazing. A lot of turnout. It's a great event.
Think about this event. It's local dollars helping local wishes. And we actually had six wish families here today throughout the event, and they all wished to go to Disney World. So Pauling must really love Disney. It's just such a joy to be able to work with the community, to see wishes come into fruition.
I love it. Can we just watch that again? Just kidding. Reminder to announce the October the 11th, 2019, 10 A.D. Planning and zoning call meeting and the October 11th, 2019, 2 P.M. call Board of Commissioners meeting. Also, I'd like to announce from our Elections Department that this afternoon, the new voting machine system will be demoed, and I'm assuming you might try it out. And that will be until 12:30 down in the meeting room. Is that right, David?
Yes, sir. The election office conference room.
Take advantage of that if you're around. We have no invited guests. Under bill awards, we have none. Reports from committees and departments. We are pleased to have Michael Justice, our Parks and Recreation Cultural Affairs Director, come forward and give us a little information about the comprehensive master plan for our Parks and Recreation. Michael?
Good morning. Several years ago, our Community Development Division was tasked with creating a comprehensive plan for the county. Part of that plan included a note review or an evaluation comprehensive plan of its own for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs. First, that's a plan that we've had in over 20 years, and it details a lot of information, good and bad, strong points and weaknesses. About a year and a half ago, you guys approved us to enter into a contract with what is now Barge Design Solutions and Mr. Steve Provo. Steve's here today to give you a quick rundown of what that final plan looks like. My mother used to tell me that my wants and my needs were two different things. We'll let you guys determine which is which when you look at this plan. So without taking up any more of the time, it's Steve Provo with Barge Design Solutions.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you for having me here this morning. We've, I'm going to open up this presentation. We've had a great experience working with the Parks Department and the public and on this project and got great input. And I'm going to show you a project overview of what has come, what has come out of it. Again, I'm Steve Provo. I'm Vice President with Barge Design Solutions. I'm a landscape architect and park system planner, and I've been doing that work for over 25 years and enjoyed working with this community and this project. This is the plan. This is a graphic representation of what the planning process is for this project. It's got five basic steps, research and analysis, where we study your community, the demographics of your community, and maybe of your park system. We have an extensive community outreach process. We do, there's three different ways we get information. We have many focus group meetings, small group meetings with stakeholders in the park system. We had two public input meetings. Those were at Mount Tabor Park and at Burn Hickory Park. And then we also had a community survey to get feedback from all across the county, including people who can't make it to a public meeting or to the focus group meetings. And then we do a needs assessment. We look at your park system, compare it to the projected growth of your population, and determine where you may, may be lacking for your population today and for 10 years from now. And based on that information, the fourth piece is development plan and recommendations. That's your recommendations over the next 10 years to bring your park system to, up to meet the potential growth of the community. And then we develop an implementation plan. And this is a step-by-step plan showing what the recommendations are, when do we recommend putting them in place, and also how to, recommendations on how to fund them. The inventory included 27 parks that we looked at, including parks that are Polton County parks, but also some that are not, but that influence how people recreate in the county. There are some brand-new parks. You have a beautiful park system, some fantastic facilities out there. There are facilities out there that have been loved, in some cases almost to death. So there's, there's some improvements that could be made also, so there's room for growth in your park system. This is a map of all of the parks that we looked at, and this becomes important because we utilize the size and location of the parks to determine what areas of the county are being served and what areas might be underserved. And we utilize a map like this. This shows all of the parks in your system, all the county parks in your system with a service area around them. So those big circles you see on there are a service area around each park. And if it's a regional park, you may have a service area of about two miles. A medium-sized park would be a one-mile service area and a half-mile service area for your smaller parks. And what this shows you is what areas of the county are not being served by your local, by your current park system. So it starts to help us identify where new parks might need to be located. I mentioned the community input process. We had two different public input meetings, and at those meetings, we took feedback from the public primarily about, well, we gave them an overview of what we've learned, all our research and analysis. And then we got feedback from them particularly about facilities that they're interested in and programs that they're interested in. And these are the items that came to the top of the facilities. The community wanted indoor, an indoor pool, walking and hiking trails. These are natural surface trails that came out of the public meetings. Mountain bike trails, community gardens, recreation center slash gymnasium. As I mentioned, we also asked them about programs, and these were the top five programs that came out. Water fitness programs, outdoor programs such as nature hikes, senior programs, bicycle lessons and clubs, and community special events. This county holds a lot of special events in their parks, and apparently the public loves them and wants more. We also had a community survey. Now, this was a survey that was administered through the Internet. We developed it with, with the county staff. It is not, it is specific to Polton County, included questions about your park system and what your community is interested in. In order for it to be a statistically valid survey, we needed at least 400 responses, and we got well over 1,000 responses. So good, good participation. And we like to compare what we got from the survey with what we heard in the focus group meetings and in public input, I mean, the public meetings. The facilities that came out of the survey, the top five, were restroom buildings, walking and hiking trails, pavilions, picnic sites, indoor pool, walking and hiking trails. These were multi-use paved trails. Those are the top facilities that came out. And then the top programs that were mentioned were community special events, also mentioned in public meetings, outdoor programs such as nature hikes, fitness and wellness programs, art classes, and water fitness programs, and last one. One of the things that we also asked in the survey was about trails. Of course, the Silver Comet Trail comes through Polton County, and we asked, "Are you interested in more trail, more multi-trails and connections to this Silver Comet Trail?" Overwhelming response was yes. Two-thirds of the respondents are interested in additional multipurpose trails and connections to the Silver Comet Trail. Now, this is an important question we asked about, how do you rate the Parks and Recreation as compared to other priorities in the community? And this is something that the Commission, of course, has to balance all the time. We asked them, "How do parks compare to other priorities such as schools, infrastructure, public safety?" And over three-quarters of the responses said that parks are as important or even more important than schools, infrastructure, and public safety. So there's huge support in the community for, for an excellent park system. People like to ask for, we asked them to dream big. We said, "Tell us what you think about your park system," and they did. But we also asked, "What, how do you want to pay for this?" And sometimes it's, you get a different answer when you ask, start asking about money. More than half of the responses favored spots to pay for significant park improvements and infrastructure. Second to that was increase in use of the rental fees, and that was at 20%. And a 14% borrow money now and pay back later. 5% don't support more funding for the parks, and 4% wanted to have a pay-as-you-go using increases in property taxes. So 57% was in favor of using spots. The community loves its parks, loves its park system. We asked if they were satisfied with it, and 80, nearly 80% are either satisfied or very satisfied with the, with the park system. Now, that doesn't mean there's not room for improvement. We would love to see this swapped, where you have the higher number of very satisfied, but this is very good. So, so the community definitely supports the system they have. So we made a series of recommendations, and this, as I mentioned, is a 10-year plan. And we break the recommendations down into what we call short-term, which is one to five years, and long-term, six to 10 years. And just briefly, I'll go over what some of those were. This is just a, an overview of them. There are improvements to the 88 facilities throughout the system that should be paid attention to. All your newer facilities seem to have paid attention to that, and some of the ones that are still to be improved need their access to be updated. This is a liability issue. As the public asked for, we're recommending renovation to existing facilities throughout the park system. In this case, we're talking about indoor facilities. There was also interest in special needs facilities, so we're recommending an inclusive playground, which is a playground that able-bodied and challenged people can play on together. Improvements of fields at Brawley Park, walking, hiking, and biking trail connections throughout the county. We look at the park staff in the park department. As the facilities and parks grow, so will the need for people to take care of them and run them. So we make recommendations in the plan to increase staff as the facilities are expanded. There was also a request for a recreation gym or pool, and that's a significant investment, of course. And so we're recommending a feasibility study to determine what would be needed, how it could be paid for, and where it might be best located in the county that's determined to be a feasible facility to. And we also looked at the new Richland Creek Reservoir Park, and are recommending additional lands be purchased around that to improve access to it. Long-term, outdoor adventure area, a lot of people wanted trails and other ways to recreate outside that were, you know, what I call non-traditional. Outdoor splash pad, new recreation center, gymnasium facility, build hiking trails and pavilions for picnic areas, a bridge connection over 278 to improve connections to the multi-use trail system. Mountain bike course in partnership with somebody who could potentially operate that with you. New soccer and multi-use field complex, recreational fields is a need. And then also dog parks is probably one of the fastest-growing types of parks throughout the country, and there were requests for that. Lastly, we've built a funding strategy matrix, which is shown here. There's a lot of information here, but I'll give you an overview of how this has been The facilities are on the left-hand column of the matrix, and then across the top are 10 years with dollars allocated each one for improvements. What we did is we front-loaded the plan, the short-term plan, with improvements and upgrades to your existing parks. And then the longer-term planned budget is for improvement, new facilities to your park system and potentially new park lands. And so that is pushed out further, potentially while plans are being done for those and also funding mechanisms are put in place for those. We had asked the community about how they wanted to potentially pay for this. We also asked members of the county about funding options. And based on the feedback and interest that we heard that this county may be interested in, the highest potential funding sources, in addition to ones I've mentioned, are around tax support, brands and franchises and licensing. Those were the top, top three that we got feedback from the county. We have given a draft final report to Michael. I believe he's made it available to all of you digitally. It is available for editing before we print and deliver your final copies. So we are expecting, if you have any comments, that we will make final edits and provide it to you, the park system, and for you to start implementing. It's been a pleasure working with this county on this project. If you have any questions about it, or if there's something I could give you more information about, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Steve, thanks for being here. All the information, all the work. An initial question would be in relation to our population in surrounding counties. Are we about average as far as our spending, or below or above?
For the park system, it's below. So there's less spending here than some of the other metro counties. And what's interesting about that is you have some excellent parks. So when we look at the dollars, it does seem like you're, you're getting a lot done for slightly less money than some of the other counties are, and you're getting good parks out of it. But there's been a lot requested by the public. You are a growing community, and there's going to need dollars to fund them immediately. That means at least for the major improvements, bonds or spots or something is what it takes to pay for those. But yeah, the, the spending level is slightly lower than what we see in some of our bachelor counties.
Other questions? Really do appreciate you being here.
You are welcome. Again, it's been a pleasure working with the, with the county, and I'm grateful to have this time to, to present the plan to you. Thank you all. Have a great morning.
Thank you. Thank you. I have no one who's signed up to speak on agenda items. You can send agenda. You'll notice one, which is declare the attached list of items on the third page as surplus and approve the donation to the Georgia Public Safety Training Center. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, number one is to discuss action to purchase two XRC 9100 Connect Plus Digital Trucking Controllers and one XRT 9100 Connect Plus Gateway with 60 Talk Pet IDs from Diverse by Electronics in the amount of $119,032. These would be spares of county radio system. David Muffler, Karen Horn. Thank you, David.
Morning, and Chairman Cover. The, our radio system is nearing end of life for the version that we have, and these are the spare controllers that we need in the event of a failure that we can replace. They're not making these anymore after October, after this month. And so we're purchasing these in advance to have as spares on hand to allow us to continue to use our system until we can make a decision as to where we're going to go with a public safety radio. The two, the two controllers that operate at the site, and then we have the one gateway that connects the 911 center to the main site. And those are just, in the event we have a failure anywhere, we can replace those items, have them on hand. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
How long do you expect before we make a decision? How long do you expect? Is we using these before a decision is made or alternate?
Before the decision is made? I'm hoping to have enough information together within the next 90 days for us to start looking at what we're going to do. When we implement it, is a different matter. I mean, that, that's, we could use these anywhere from a year to three years, as long as the other parts of the system. You know, the, the other parts of the system are still being manufactured. So if one of them fails, we should be able to replace those fairly easily. But this, the system we have is a mobile proprietary system. And so, you know, when they decide to move it to the next version and stop supporting it, we're kind of stuck.
Thanks, David. Number two is discuss action to purchase the interview equipment for the Adult Detention Law Enforcement Center from the lowest bidder, Intelligent Video Solutions, in the amount of $99,961. And everyone knows the jail's in post two. And we've got this poller, Mr. Green, standing by.
Okay. First question is, why is this not included in bid awards? That's because this was handled by CPS, and, and they gathered their quotes from the three different vendors and supplied them to us. So that's why it's presented to you on the grid award. And it is less than $100,000, so we don't, we don't actually have to go out and do a formal advertisement, which can be expensive. This is equipment that the jail doesn't currently have in their existing facility. And so I've asked Colonel Hunter to come and give you an overview of what this will allow them to be able to do, that they can do. But we are recommending award to the lowest bidder. And it ranges from $99,961 up to $225,625 and something like that. So, and CPS has confirmed it does get all of the equipment that they want.
Good morning. I've been good this morning?
As is, sir.
Good, good. Ms. Taff asked me to just talk about this system briefly. With this system here, we'll be using this in our interview rooms throughout the facility. We have one interview room that will be in the detention setting in our book-in area. And then our Criminal Investigations Division is going to have seven interview rooms. And our Juvenile and Crimes Against Children will have five interview rooms. One of those interview rooms will be for when they do their forensic interviews with juvenile victims. So with this system here, we'll be able to accommodate all that through this system with CPS's help, especially retired Chief Deputy Stan Copeland helped me, helped me out tremendously on this. And I put a small committee together at the Sheriff's Office. We went through all the vendors. And we didn't just go with IPBIS because they were the cheapest. We went with them because we believe they can provide what we need. So we think they can, they can meet our accommodations and help us into the future as, as we continue to try to provide the best services for the county that we can. So I'll be more glad to answer any questions.
How many interview rooms do we have?
Currently, in Criminal Investigations, we have three interview rooms. We did have four, but the system that we have now, we built it ourselves, and we had to take one of the interview rooms and put all the equipment in there. And it's, it's, it's pretty tight. And it's right there where all the investigators' desks are and everything. At Crimes Against Children and Juvenile, they have two interview rooms, and we took two closets over there and made them interview rooms. And it's basically recorded with a handheld camera and audio that, that we came up with ourselves. ourselves. So it's not very good quality. It's, it's tough on the investigators, because a lot of times when they've interviewed somebody, they like to go back and review that. With this new technology that's out there now, it's right there at their fingertips on their computer. When they go back to review it, they're not having to put a disc in and having to try to stop it and rewind it and all that. They can actually make marks in the interview where the, the suspect or witness may have said something that's important to the case. They can actually mark it in there, and that in turn helps our district attorney's office out making good prosecution cases.
Anybody else?
So this just kind of catches us up with technology?
Uh, yes, drastically. We're actually being in the 21st century, so.
So, when are we opening?
We're hoping, as of our last meeting, we're still on track for substantial completion on December the 19th and final completion February 20th. So the sheriff and I are hoping to start moving early March. So we're trying to put some plans together now. I've been working with Mr. Copeland again to start training some of our staff at the end of this month with our, the, the control system that we're going to have for the facility. So we're going to hopefully start training at the end of the month and just progress from there.
Great work, Ted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for wearing the pink badge.
Yes, ma'am. With pride. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That is the conclusion of regular business under public discussion on non-agenda items. With please, that is Torres, Magic Morris to come forward and speak on precinct closings.
Thank you all for having me today. Give an honor to God that I'm standing here. Praise the Lord. I wanted to discuss the precinct closings because I've seen in the newspapers how we're getting more precincts. Paulding County is a culture by itself, but there's also subcultures within Paulding County. So some cultures may not understand the importance to not close precincts and to mess with the opportunities for people to have their opportunity to vote. I'm standing here, but I'm standing here as a representative because there's been many voices coming to me. So as you look at me, understand that I'm speaking on behalf of many. So, and I want to thank a lot of them for showing up today. So a lot of people have come because this is a major concern. Now, while we may not understand, we think that, okay, here's the situation. We had 12 voting precincts. So out of the 12 voting precincts, seven of those have closed. So when you have seven closings, and then you're reporting that we have more, that now we're opening, we have 17 voting precincts, yes, but you closed seven. And so with those closings, when people show up to vote, they may be running from work and just have that one opportunity to come, and they're closed, they're moved. Where did they go? So they have to get back to work. That's a lost vote. We have young students or other people don't have transportation, and they may have over or lived. They can't vote that have changed to where. I spoke to another official who, their precincts keep changing. They may, they show up and find out they have to drive to the other side to go vote, and it's made them late. But because they understand the importance of it, they were just late. But everybody is not going to do that. So we do consider this as a form of voter suppression, and it does disenfranchise voters because when they show up, they can't vote. And so you may say, we're going to send out cards. We have an election coming up, even though it's a municipal in the east block, but we have an election coming up November, November 5th. People still don't know that their location has changed on November 5th. And I was asked, well, why is that so important? Because it's just a municipal or an east block. All voting opportunities are important. That is the opportunity for people to voice their, to, to express their voice and opinion, and that's why voting is important, because you want the voices of the community, because that's who you represent. So when it comes to closing precincts, another concern I have is, okay, we're going to private locations. So yes, we're opening up more locations. We are shutting down government entities for government activities and placing them on private businesses to be responsible for. So while they may say that's a concern for schools and students, a lot of times, Paulding County, and I have three small ones, and they're out of school a, a bit. They was just out a whole week, a few weeks ago. So they're out of school alive. And we need to understand that importance of why we need to, one, if they're not in school on a voting day, we can section off or close that school, and our priority is to, of course, protect the students. But you say the schools are concerned, you kept two open and opened up two more schools. So if schools are concerned, why are we opening up more schools for voting? Another thing that was given because we can't, I'm post three, Commissioner Hart is my commissioner with the, and I understand Michael Justice is here with Park and Recreation. They closed that location because they got new gym floors. It's offensive to me that I can't vote because you got pretty floors. Why would you utilize taxpayers' money to build floors that we cannot utilize? So I feel like that's irresponsible. And like I said, it's been expressed to me, and I come as a voice for many. And we do, like I said, may not be the reality, but perception becomes reality. It is a form of voter suppression. 2020 presidential election is coming up. That is a huge, like in today's climate, we don't want to touch anything right now. We already get new machines, that's going to be chaotic. Now we're moving locations, that's going to be chaotic. And as I'm in post three, you move to a smaller facility with less parking, that's going to be more lines. So I'm not, I'm just saying, people may not be aware. I'm not saying this is unintentional in any way. I know planning and organizing is very difficult, and that's why community input is important when you're making these decisions. So while the papers say we're getting more, we're not getting more, you're taking away in opening up more locations, but you're leaving it to us to figure out where. So those are my concerns. I hope I'm heard today, and I, I hope we can work together to fix this problem. But we should not take government activities outside of government and put it in the hands of private ownership. These are our rights. This is our taxpayer dollars. This is why we pay our, we pay our taxes, we pay into this. So to have us not vote because we have pretty floors, that's like saying we have new TVs and new carpeting, and we're going to hold our meetings outside. We have to keep in mind while we're here, Parks and Recreation is here for the community. So that's my time. Thank you all for having me again.
Next, we have Mr. Lucas Newborn, who is going to speak on voting rights and freedoms.
How's everyone doing this morning?
Good.
A little bit tired, it sounds like. Oh, no. Good morning. First and foremost, this is the first time I've had the privilege to speak with some of y'all. Congratulations on your races. And thank you, esteemed board members and Sheriff Carmichael, for having us today. At the end of the day, I think I have found one of my biggest problems with Paulding County is me calling Ms. Deidre Holton, because we can't talk on phone for less than two hours. And in those conversations, we go through a lot, because as some of you know, I'm your currently serving 14th congressional district chair for the Democratic Party of Georgia. So as I was your chair for the Democratic Party of Paulding County, I am now responsible for 11 counties. Paulding County, for me, holds a special place because it's where I call home, it's where my family calls home. And I'm also here today, carrying the voices of not only Paulding County, but a congressional district, and carrying the voices, who, who actually showed up today for the speaking about this issue, voter rights, voter protection? So not only am I here today voicing my concerns for you, but also those who can't be today because they're hard workers, their moms who are trying to get to and from work and school. I believe it is every intention, especially having spoken to Ms. Deidre, and I constantly speak with her, because at the end of the day, I'm a firm believer that partisan politics and the divisiveness within our country today is done for me. I believe in getting things accomplished. I believe in doing the right thing. I believe that that is how we should govern, that the intent of how we do things is very important. So I have no doubt in the intents of our elections office here, or Ms. Deidre Holton. But I do have concerns that some of the ideas put forth are not ideas that support the people in this county, especially considering how many of us leave the county to work, and we're trying to get everyday basic needs and family matters taken care of. Now, out of 12 precincts that were open in 2018, seven of those have been closed and/or relocated. And when we say we've put more voting locations out there, that's true, and that's a positive thing. I'm very thankful for that. In 2018, I had the privilege of jumping out of my car at 6:45 and running personally to the end of the line at Shelton Elementary School. I had to do that and ask my partner, Daniel, to drive because there was nowhere to park. There was no one directing traffic in and out of that school. It was chaos, to be blunt. The line was over three hours long. We actually sent, we had an organization send pizzas to Shelton Elementary School that day because the lines were so long. The right to vote is as American as American gets. The right to vote right now, this year, and next year, to me, is the fundamental things we have to be thinking about in our community and in our state. I am concerned as a citizen today, and I know what it takes to run a small organization, a medium-sized organization, and now to serve as a congressional district chair. So it's a lot. I'm not expecting us to quickly change things for 2019, but at the end of the day, I have spoken with Deidre. She's informed me that we can, this year, reopen, reorganize, and work hard to serve the people in this county with more voting locations open next year. But I'm trying to think about folks like my dad, who was working 60, 70-hour weeks while trying to take care of my grandmother, who just came out of rehab after two months in the hospital. In Paulding County Hospital, which is a fabulous, awesome thing we have now, thank you. I'm upset because I think about him showing up to a voting location because he finally had that chance to leave work, of which many people are worried about getting fired to go vote. And he shows up, such as the woman who showed up at 6:58 at Shelton Elementary School. And she is running to get there, and she stops, and she's breathing. She says, oh, God, I made it. And the gentleman said, ma'am, you're just not quite here in time. And she said, what are you talking about? I waited 30 minutes in traffic to get to this spot. I'm a wounded veteran. I served two terms. I had surgery. I can barely walk. I had to run here. So I called Representative Alexander and said, ma'am, I'm concerned, I'm not sure exactly what to do. She said, you have a wounded veteran who served two terms in the Middle East. Take her to the front of the line. At the end of the day, we have a responsibility to protect the integrity of that vote. And at the closing of my, my two-hour call with Deidre yesterday, she and I agreed very strongly on something. Yes, ma'am. The right to vote is imperative, and we should protect that. I lost my faith in the election processes in Paulding County in 2018, and I'm sorry for that. But I believe we should fight hard next year to bring that integrity back. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here today and taking the opportunity to speak. The executive session required today is about real estate and pending and potential litigation. I need to get a motion in a second for us to go with the executive session for those purposes.
They all move that we go to executive sessions for real estate and potential litigation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, and a second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Stover, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, then do the executive session. Got a court? Call the regular session back to order, and I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn.
Mr. Davis, the second.
Aye.
Mr. Stover, all in favor?
Aye.
And adjourned.